David, do we want to give your folks a little bit longer to get here?
Well, I give them a couple of minutes, but most of them responded they'd be here tonight at 6 o'clock. So I'm not sure what's going on, to be honest with you. They indicated they'd be here. A couple more minutes, then we start.
I'm showing three, is that right? Darlene, Dave, and Merrily?
Yeah, I'm here, Dave.
Okay.
I'm here. I'm trying to get in the darn.
There's Jeff in person this week.
Very good. Let's miss, if you can, Keith, wait a minute, a couple more minutes.
Sure.
And proceed with your meeting, please.
So Emily, Patrick, there's one attendee who, I think I just lost them. Yes, is only there with audio and would like possibly to get a video link.
Patrick, are you, did you hear Bob? Okay.
All I see is for an identifier 1703 something or other. Because she said that she was trying to get video and couldn't.
Great.
There she is.
Keith, are you there?
I'm here.
At this point, if you wish to start the meeting, go right ahead, sir.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and get started. Certainly, anybody jumps in in the next few minutes, we'll be glad to bring them up to speed. So we've done a number of meetings, both as a formal board, also as the finance committee. And at this point, we're looking at a total proposed budget of $3,902,674.78, which is a 2.05% increase. When you factor in state subsidy, carryover, and what we'll call, well, this carryover from last year from the audit, and then what we call pull forward, anticipated carryover from this year, when you factor all that in, a local contribution is $3,294,792.38, which is a $5,128.73 increase, or 0.16% increase to the taxpayer. Emily, I don't know if you want to walk through kind of where we started and how we got here on a high level, and then certainly we'll open up any questions either the board or the budget advisory committee may have.
David, did you want me to do the same thing I did a couple of weeks ago with all of the details we went through?
If you can, please.
Sure, okay. All right, so we talked about this a couple of weeks ago in our first workshop with the budget advisory committee, but it's been quite a long budget process. We are ready for our first reading in March, which was delayed due to the pandemic. Since then, we've had many phases of our budget, and then the town meeting was delayed, and the new guidance has come up for looking at COVID-19 preparations. So our initial budget for consideration, that would have been the first reading, had an increase of local contribution of $188,895,188,895.75. And my initial proposal included one more day per week of social work services. It had a roofing allocation for reserve fund set aside at about $45,000. It had a proposal for changing over our custodial services and hiring our own staff. And it had $126,971.64 increase for six through 12 tuition. And the tuition is always determined each year by looking at our current enrollment and then adding three additional students at a hypothesized increase of either 3% to 4%. We don't get our tuition increases until December, so it's always a little bit of a guess. So we had started out with having six additional students in there. And then through many meetings and adjustments, we removed the roofing allocation, we removed all of our flooring and shelving projects, we removed the increase to social work services, we cut back on supplies and equipment, we removed the custodial proposal. We adjusted tuition to be 3% increase instead of 4% with two additional students, and that's now just one at each level, six through eight and nine through 12. We removed the increase to board stipends that had been requested by the auditors and now have actually removed board stipends altogether. We removed technology upgrades that we needed for our Wi-Fi and are managing that out of current funds. We removed our gym door facilities project. We removed the increase to food service that had been recommended by the auditors, and then we continued to pick away at supplies and materials and professional development. We increased carry forwards slightly. And we are now at a place, as Keith said, that our increase to the local contribution is 0.016%. That being said, that in looking at this budget, we had some real challenges in our conversations because we needed to really think through needs for COVID-19 in reopening the building in addition to what we need for just running a school. And so you have in your email and attached to this meeting our overall budget proposal. But we'll focus on the cost centers that look like this sheet, and then you can ask me questions if you have them as we go through them. So the first cost center is regular instruction, and that is the elementary school regular instruction for classroom instruction. That's a decrease of 0.43% that maintains all of our staffing at its current level. But there are reductions in a variety of lines such as professional development, equipment, and supplies. And then there's some reductions in health insurance in terms of what people are choosing to take for next year. Cost center O2, regular instruction tuition, this is our six through 12 tuition lines. And this is what I mentioned early on, is a challenge rate from beginning because we knew, you know, we have to budget for at least the students that we have, and we have to guess what the increase is going to be each year in terms of the rate of tuition, and we have to guess on what enrollment is. Currently, we're going to make the assumption that the 3% increase will cover it, we'll find out in December, and we've budgeted for one additional student at each level, six through eight and nine through 12. And so that's an increase of $79,537.93, something that we can't really quite get around. Line O3 is special education instruction. And this line has an increase that's being proposed because we have needs coming in in kindergarten that we need to have an ed tech for. But there's also a 10% decrease in other expenses, and so it's offset slightly. So you'll see the increase is $41,541.19, but some of that has been, some of the costs we had previously have been decreased. So adding an ed tech, you don't see as much of an impact. I also just want to say that we have a change in our special education transportation budget, which is a reduction of $20,000 that you'll see later. And we also have a change in the O4 cost center for six through 12 special education. And so overall, special education actually is down even with needing to budget differently for the elementary school. Cost center O4 is special education tuition, and each year, just like we do for regular ed tuition, we budget based on what our knowns are for what student current programs look like. And so given the needs that we'll have for students for next year and changes they've had to their program this year, we are able to decrease our special education tuition by 37.5%, or $53,000. So just as I was saying before with the cost center O3, that those help to offset each other, really budgeting for what our needs are. In cost center O5, there is no change. Cost center O7 is student and staff support. And the reason for the significant increase is that due to some needs of some incoming kindergarten students, but also due to looking at the summer guidance for how to handle COVID-19 and needing to have multiple screenings per day, I feel really strongly that we need to increase our nursing services from one day per week to five days per week. I don't know how we would manage just meeting the summer guidelines for reopening school without having a full-time nurse. And it just seems like it's a prudent decision to have a nurse on site, given incoming needs of students and then also given the current state of affairs with COVID-19. So that change in cost center O7 is to increase nursing services from one day per week to five days per week. Cost center O8 is system administration, and the slight increase here is actually due to a proposed increase in legal fees. And then there are many lines that are reduced, and so you don't see that increase so much. But next year, we have to negotiate our contracts with teachers and support staff, and then also given a variety of changes with employment law, we felt it was prudent to increase our legal fees for next year. In cost center O9, this is school administration, the slight increase is because of health insurance changes. In cost center 10, this is transportation, this is a place that we've talked about at great length through a variety of our meetings. My initial proposal is actually how it ends up on the paper that you have in front of you, it's down $20,000. And that decrease is keeping all pieces the same except for special education transportation, which again, based on the needs of students that will be anticipating being enrolled next year, then we are able to decrease what their needs for transportation are. However, this was an area that we've talked about at length because of concerns for COVID and social distancing requirements. Because, for example, if you look at the summer school requirements, in order to maintain a six-foot distance between students, the bus service feels they would need to run our school buses up to four times more per day, which, if you calculate that mileage over, that's an increase of $45,000 more. So we have looked at a variety of ways to think about transportation and then have watched sort of the rules change and are thinking about, you know, that would be a worst-case scenario if we were at school every single day and we had to run every bus four times more, and it just, that doesn't seem doable. And so we feel that we can go back to what our regular transportation budget is, and then I'll talk about how we can work to offset that as we go forward a little bit further. In operation and maintenance, cost center 11, we removed all of the proposals and projects the facilities committee had proposed, with the exception of one, we've kept in the unit ventilator project because for each year, each of the last two years, this will be the third, we've been working on replacing the unit ventilator in the old wing of the building. And given that that ends up being a ventilation and health and safety consideration, we felt that we should continue moving forward with upgrading our unit ventilators, so we kept that project in there. Only other pieces that remain in our operation and maintenance is regular maintenance of the facility and our cleaning supplies and maintenance supplies and our cleaning contracts. And cost center 13, food service, there is no change, we've left that in place. So the real struggle we've had with this budget process is that we have knowns that we have to plan as if all pieces were normal and what we know each year. And then we have a significant amount of unknowns that we have to plan for. And so we've had many, many conversations about the best way to do this. And what we currently are thinking that will make our budget work, given the cost centers that I just outlined, is that if we have a warrant article to reallocate our existing reserve funds that exist now for special education, which are an amount of $60,000, and reallocate them into an unanticipated expenditure account, which, due to the change in LD 1918, which goes into effect in just six days, then we would be able to make that change to unanticipated expenditures. And then our thinking is rather than plan for every contingency, all the pieces that are unknown, we'd be able to cover a change in tuition if more students were to move in, or if the percent increase was higher, we'd be able to cover a change in special education needs or transportation needs, or a small facilities change if we need to make a change for COVID preparations that we don't know about. I mean, $60,000 won't cover every unanticipated expenditure, but it would cover some of the ones that we're really struggling with thinking about how to prepare for. And then another item that seems to be important to us to be able to get through this process is to have a warrant article that requests that the board's permitted to move more than 5% of an account from a cost, amount of a cost center to another cost center, as long as it doesn't increase the budget. Right now, we can move up to 5%, but we can ask for approval at town meeting to transfer more than 5%. And then, for example, if we had a change in enrollment and didn't need to hire an ed tech, then those funds could be transferred to cover another unanticipated need if that does need to happen. So what we're thinking is rather than trying to plan for every unanticipated need, that those two changes might help us to get through what is really a challenging budget season. The bottom of your sheet really talks about the subsidy and revenue that comes in. So we have an increase in state subsidy of $48,905, so it's an increase of 24.69%. There's no more tuition credit. We've increased carryover to be $175,100, and then we have the carryover from last year's undesigned fund balance. And so with that, we have an increase of local contribution of $5,128.73, or 0.16% at this time.
Thank you, Emily. And I guess before we take questions, I just would say this is a bare bones budget. We have purposely taken the position that we may need to tap into that reserve account, assuming it gets re-appropriated. We may need to go back to a special town meeting if some unforeseen thing pops up. But the board felt it was more appropriate to minimize the impact on local contribution on the taxpayers than to try to guess, you know, some numbers or over-assume some regulations that may be in place. So I just wanted to put it on the table that there is some risk in this budget, and the board is aware of that, and we've debated that. But we think that's the proper position that the board should take when we go before the taxpayers and ask them for allocations moving forward. But we may need to, we may need to come back if something is askew. I'll open it up for questions from the budget advisory committee. Or comments or ideas. Yeah, go ahead.
Is it okay, David, if I go ahead?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so it's obvious, so I'm wondering what precipitated your, these changes that you have, are proposing from what you were starting with initially? I realize we have COVID. Were you given some direction to trim more? The reason I ask that is because, have you gotten figures from the town that are showing that our revenue is going to be less? Or have, did you do this on your own? I have an understanding from some reports that I've read that next year could be worse actually for revenue than this year. So I'm concerned about cutting back too much. So where did this come from, if you would please?
Well, one of my big concerns all along, Merrily, had been that once town meeting was moved into the new fiscal year, it means I'm starting the year on my current budget. And so in order to be able to plan for being able to give my staff contracts, I felt that I can't in good faith go in with much more than a zero increase because I can't guarantee, you know, typically by June, I would know what I have to work with, and I can give contracts and we have a plan. But without a town meeting prior to July 1st, I don't have that. So that really was where the beginning first came of thinking about, so how can we do all that we can to get to a 0% increase? And then also knowing that, while we've had some conversations with the town, we haven't had revenue forecasting to know what the revenue does look like, but it only makes sense, we know families are struggling, we know communities are struggling, it's as hard for everybody. And so my hope for next year is we at least know what the knowns we're working with and we're able to, you know, then again, plan more efficiently and effectively as we need to, but it just felt like it was, right.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
I just want to say that from my point of view, the school has done a good job as far as trying to walk a thin line, a fine line, as to what is needed and not needed. And you've cut pretty much all you can cut. We don't, there's so many unknowns this year. And next year could be worse, we just don't know. And we know there are some residents in town and taxpayers who will have a hard time paying the taxes and their living expenses. So I think it's incumbent on all of us to have a very fine budget as close as we can to keep them coming. And I think the school board has tried very hard to do that. And they realize that some residents in the town are going to struggle this year and next year, and who knows how long. We appreciate the fact that they took that consideration. One question, Emily, is the carryover, you think that's pretty close as far as you want to go on the carryover?
My feeling is that we, the board should consider going, you know, covering the remaining $5,128.73 and get right to zero. But I keep going through the figures, and I don't think we should go any further. Because if we have a little bit left over in our undesigned fund balance, then if there's another expense we need to cover, we can go to town meeting but not have to raise any additional taxes. We'd take it out of the undesigned fund balance. And then, again, our auditors have told us consistently to try to have $175,000 in there or so to be able to try to keep things as even for taxpayers as we can. And like Merrily was saying, we're anticipating next year is going to be harder. And so if we keep cutting away at our carry forward, then we're going to have less to work with to figure out that problem next year. I think, my recommendation would be that we go all the way to 0% increase and then stop there.
So as far as the school is concerned, you cut the budget as much as you reasonably think you can. In worst-case scenario, if something pops up unexpectedly financially, we could call a special town meeting and deal with that at a special town meeting. So that's a backup plan, is a special town meeting if needed.
Correct. Any other feedback, questions?
I actually have, Darlene, oh, hi, sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Darlene.
Yeah, so I agree with David, it looks like you guys have done a great job with this. Just one thing that I had a question about, you're talking about the line seven with the nursing, having someone in there five days a week, makes sense, I was just curious, is that like all day, five days a week? Is it, you know, in the morning taking temperatures, that sort of thing, or what new rules are?
So none of us really know what the rules are either. But it would be all day. The current summer school rules say that it's temperatures and wellness checks need to happen for all students and staff before, during, and at the end of the school day. And so it feels prudent to have someone on site all of the time.
Wow, how are you going to teach anybody if they're being tested three times a day? It's going to be tough.
I'm not arguing, but we're going to figure out how to make it work.
All right, I was just curious, thank you.
Yeah, no, full time.
I have a question, it's Merrily. Last year, you accounted for three additional students to come in, did I get that correctly? How many students did come in last year, additional?
The, the way it works once we get our tuition increases, in terms of the percentage, this year, we were, again, right spot on with our projection for tuition. And so it's risky to go down to only a couple of students. But if this is, this feels like it's the year to give that a try with all the pieces that are unknown about the fall, I expect we'd have less students enrolling, not more students enrolling, is sort of our hypothesis.
Three new houses opened, three new houses were just built right by me here in town, and there's children out there playing all the time, so I am concerned about that. I, I mean, you will do as you see fit, you have studied this a lot, but I would like to see maybe some more set aside for additional students. And if you could, what's this, I mean, I know what a social worker does, but what, what's the need for a social worker in the school, and what would you have done? And maybe at this time, a social worker might be a really important thing, I think a lot of families are in the great deal of stress, so could you address that?
So our social worker currently does a variety of things, she serves as both our guidance counselor and our, our social worker. So she teaches guidance classes on a weekly basis to all of our classes, and also services all of the students who have social work on their individual education plans. And then also does short-term services with students to be able to help them to determine whether they needed to work with an outside counselor or if it's just short-term pieces they need. She does work with families, she works in collaboration with all of our teachers to make sure that their students have what they need in terms of support. The reason for the need, the increase that I had proposed initially was because our suites or services are decreasing, and so it's harder to get inside support for students. And at the same time, special education needs for social worker increasing. And so she's, she's really strapped for time and resources. So it, it was a proposal that I had made initially because I really felt like it was best for our school. And I agree that it's, again, during this time, it's, social emotional learning is probably going to be the most critical piece. But we, at the current status of four days per week rather than five, to try to get through this budget process.
So those are the two areas that jump out at me as, if you, you know, didn't feel as pressured that you could provide for additional students to come in. And, and you know, if we don't use it, we don't have to spend it. But I do think the social work at this time probably would be prudent, but that's just a late for some.
I agree, it's a hard thing to walk away from.
I think Jeff's trying to weigh in, let's let Jeff have a shot.
Oh, can I interrupt one quick second? I've got Suzanne and Drayson Selectman on, but she says she can see you guys, but no one can hear her. So I don't know if that's something on your end, you could check.
There's a mute button.
Yeah, yeah, she says it's working.
It's, she's streaming, she's.
She's watching the live stream, she's not in the active.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay, I will let her know, thanks.
No, I, I just have a couple of brief comments. I think I'd just like to thank the board, these are really, really difficult decisions. And it appears that they're made for the right reasons. And it's, it's, it's good to see that, that the, that the board listened and that the board actually is, is going in the direction and showing that they are paying attention to the community and the needs right now. So I just want to say thank you, I realize how hard it must have been and how much work probably went into it, so I appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Keith?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Just to address Merrily's concern about tuition, and correct me if I'm wrong if I remember our discussion. Bob, you were thinking that because students were Um, Bob, you were thinking that because students were, you know, learning virtually, that possibly some of our students would continue that next year? I think that was your reasoning, Bob, for, you know, decreasing the tuition. Am I, am I right?
Well, uh, most people that I've heard from or read about in the state are assuming that they're, as a result of, of this, there will be more homeschooling. We just don't know what the numbers are going to be.
And Emily talked about the transportation being less, but said she'd talk about that later.
Right, so with the transportation, as I said, if it's in the budget, is $20,000 less. And that's because we had the ability to reduce, uh, special education transportation. But in the, through the process, we actually had increased transportation, um, to be greater, to cover increased amount of bus runs, um, if need be to social, for social distancing. So the way we were able to pull it back was to again, talk about that reallocating our reserve fund at town meeting to go from a special education, um, fund, which it is now, to an unanticipated expenditure fund. And that way, if there was a need to be able to, need to increase transportation, that would fall under unanticipated expenditures and we could access the reserve fund to help with that.
Just a quick question on that. Have you, have you talked to any other communities as far as, as how they're going to deal with this? Cause I can't imagine it's even a rational thought that people are going to start transporting four times the amount. Um, and, and especially the, it seems like there's a, um, a disconnect between social distancing and, and proper PPE. If it comes to that, I just, have you spoken to any other community about that?
Um, I have. And I think that's sort of where the school board was getting to, is saying that it's not really doable, um, to be running buses four times the amount. And so there must be another way that we need to do it. Um, I've talked with RSC one about their thoughts and so Patrick agrees that's not doable, and he has another sort of plan in place that may help us to if, if they're not having, um, all of their students attend school every day, for example, then we wouldn't be transporting our middle and high school students. And then we'd be able to access those buses and those funds to be able to support, to support our elementary students. It's all hypothetical. We just, we don't know, but it comes into the unanticipated expenditure piece.
Yeah, you may find too, that people are maybe bringing their children to school instead of putting them on the bus.
Right.
And I that you have less coming that way anyway.
Correct. And then also with PPE, um, already the change from the guidance from the, um, what came out initially for summer, it sort of cut from having to have students every six feet. You can have one household per, per row. And so that increases the number of, or decreases the amount of bus runs you'd have to have from that four to maybe two. It's just variables we just can't predict. Um, many other districts have an increased amount of CARES funds coming in. And so they're not having to have all these local budget conversations about how to cover, um, expenditures like transportation because they have increase in federal funds. But the federal funds are distributed, uh, through your Title I allocations. And so our allocation ends for CARES funds ends up being about $12,000. Um, as opposed to other districts who have hundreds of thousands of dollars. So.
Keith.
Yeah.
Just one comment. Uh, the school board, as far as I know, was not pressured in any way to come up with a low budget. This is the school board and Emily's budget as proposed several times. And, uh, it was, it's been noted that they kept, you guys kept noting that time's going to be tough with the town and certain taxpayers, and this is your budget. As far as I know, there was no pressure put on any of you to cut this budget. This is your budget.
That's 100% truthful. Any other comment on the budget?
Other than very much for a very tough budget year, and I appreciate your efforts and all the time put into this budget. And going forward, we'll do, all do the best we can to maybe make a reasonable budget in a solid education, which is the most important part.
Agreed. All right, seeing no other comment, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the workshop. And then the board will reconvene in our regular board meeting. Uh, so board members close out of this meeting and then log into the other meeting. Uh, we'll be live streaming that as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here we go. All right, it looks like everybody has successfully transitioned, uh, from workshop to regular meeting. So I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and take a roll call. Ashley.
Present.
Joanne.
Present.
Bob.
Present.
Mary.
Here.
I'm present as well. So everyone is here and accounted for. Uh, at this point, I'll ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, justiciable, justiciable.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, appreciate the board's willingness to move the meeting back to a later start time. Uh, I'd also like to, uh, wish, uh, Mr. John McPhail a happy 90th birthday. Uh, Mr. McPhail, uh, was a teacher and principal at West Bass School from 1965 to 1990. And just celebrated his 90th birthday this past Sunday. So a very happy birthday, Mr. McPhail, on behalf of the West Bass School Board. I'm not aware of any adjustments to the agenda. Anybody have any? Very well, seeing none. Uh, brings us to public comment, and I do not believe we have received any prior to the meeting.
I haven't, Keith, I do, I do have a selectman who's, would like to, had wanted to comment in the workshop. Um, and I don't want the board to go through their action without getting her comment. Can we pause for just a moment, moment, moment while I can reach out to her?
Sure.
Okay.
While we're waiting, I just want to say, Mr. McPhail was my teacher and principal at West Bass School. How did you know it was his birthday?
Uh, there was a Facebook group that, that started, uh, they, they did a virtual card for him, uh, and I was invited to be part of that group.
Oh.
It was neat to see everyone share, uh, memories, uh, over the last week or so why they built that. And then they shared it with him on Sunday.
Oh, that's nice. Our kids would be sad that we didn't sing the official West Bass birthday song.
I, I, I can live with that disappointment.
I don't know that she's right there, but.
Um, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and proceed, uh, to item 6.1? And if the question comes in, we certainly can share it as part of that discussion. Uh, so moving on to old business, item 6.1, discussion of the proposed school budget. Um, but we just, we just had a workshop, a second workshop with the Budget Advisory Committee. Um, and then of course, the board had a meeting, uh, last week, uh, where we made some changes to the budget. Any additional board discussion, action, or comment on the proposed budget? Uh, and again, that current proposed budget is a total proposed budget of $3,902,674.78, which is a 2.05% increase. The local contribution is $3,294,792.38, which is a 0.16% increase over the current budget. Go ahead, Joanne.
Um, I'm not sure if we can discuss this because we discussed it in executive session. But did we make a final decision on, um, those four staff members who do not fall under the contracts, the teachers and the ed techs do?
Uh, I, I feel as though we did. If the board feels we didn't, then we would need to go back into executive session and discuss that.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I couldn't remember what, if, if we were going to discuss that with, um, in the workshop or not.
My recollection is that, uh, we put that to rest. And that we're going with the, um, the budget as proposed.
Okay.
Emily, um, you mentioned in the workshop that you would feel comfortable, um, with the additional $5,000 and some change to make a true flat budget?
They would.
Okay. Um, I don't know what everybody else's thoughts are on that, but I, um, I would lean towards making that, um, that move.
Well, the only real issue is that, uh, if something happens that the unanticipated expenditure, uh, fund, uh, is insufficient, then we're going to still have to go in and tap that, uh, uh, carryover reserve. Um, so there's a a question, not only do we cover the $5,128.73, uh, but is it appropriate to add any additional funds to any cost center? Uh, and cover that as well, uh, so that we don't increase from our, our current. It's, um, open to question, open to discussion.
We, we also have two items from the workshop, uh, that I think we may want to at least discuss. Uh, and that's the question of, are, are we comfortable with social work at four days? And are we comfortable at tuition? You know, as budgeted at one extra student. And I guess while I agree, uh, you know, I, I think the social work needs are going to be there next year. Uh, I think I still stand behind the decision of the board personally, uh, to keep it at the four days that we budgeted. Um, and, and while tuition is a change from, from practice, uh, I personally am comfortable at that level. Uh, simply because I, I frankly think there will be some more students who elect to homeschool uh, in the coming year. And so while it's not the buffer or, or the the approach, uh, that we typically take and, and just, you know, so we're clear. Last year, we were about $5,000 off, uh, on, on our estimate. Um, but I think given the, the circumstances, given what I personally anticipate school to look like next year, I think some additional people may opt to homeschool. I'm, I'm comfortable with the rest. Welcome to discuss it if, if other people have different views.
I was, uh, somewhat, I don't know, surprised that there are three additional houses that have been, been built or are being built. And therefore will be occupied. Uh, that's the first time I had actually seen or heard that, uh, particular, uh, figure.
Keith, I, I agree with what you, you're thinking also.
I do too. I think that, um, although it would be nice to have a, a larger buffer for the, the tuition and, um, obviously social work additions would be helpful as well. I just think that we've done so much work over the last few weeks to get our budget where it is now, that um, sort of going back on that at the 11th hour is kind of counterproductive from what we've been trying to accomplish.
And I assume, Emily, you're still comfortable as budget?
I think it's a hard budget. No matter what we do, we can't do all the pieces that we feel like we would like to do and, um, social work and social emotional learning is going to be our biggest challenge up ahead. And so there, there was a reason I started with the five days and you know, if we get to the fall and things look different than we're anticipating, we maybe have to revisit that. But, um, I think it's only prudent to go in with a flat budget, and I don't see another way to do it.
I also think that same line, it's important to point out that although it's, we weren't able to increase our services, we also haven't had to decrease any services. And so I think that's an important thing that we, um, really need to focus on going forward is that as tough as this budget has been, we've really been able to salvage as much as we possibly can. And so I think that's, it's commendable.
I also wanted to mention that the teachers and staff at West Bass School are amazing with social and emotional support as they are. And I know they're not trained necessarily or licensed to do it, but I think that it's very, they're very strong that area. And so I feel like the, they're going to be able to provide a lot of the support that is needed for those students without having to add an extra day of the actual licensed person.
So I, I am going to go ahead and make a motion, uh, that we, uh, pull in an additional, uh, $5,128.73 from carry forward so that we present a 0% budget.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Only to point out that, uh, the econo, town economic conditions may be even worse next year. And that's my only concern is, uh, to take the money, uh, more money from our, uh, carryover fund. Uh, it's not a lot, but it is a concern.
Any additional board discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ashley?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Bob?
abstain.
Mary?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Passes 401. Any additional action or discussion on the budget? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item 7.1, new business, executive order, uh, 56 FY 1920. Uh, Emily, do you want to just give a high level, um, overview of what this executive order entails? Emily, do you want to just give a high level overview of what this executive order entails?
Sure. So we received this executive order last Thursday or Friday. And what it allows for is for schools to not go through the town meeting process, but instead to approve their budget through the public forums that we've done so far and then to move everything to referendum for the July 14th referendum. In conversations with the commissioner each week about what was up and coming, you know, we talked about the pros and cons of all that. Initially, the order was not optional. It was schools will do this. And before it was changed, they did allow wording that allows for to be optional. But the school department, the school board has to decide whether or not you want things to go to referendum July 14th or whether or not you you know, our town is going to have a town meeting. They're looking to do it in August. So I guess our decision is do we adopt a budget tonight and get everything on a referendum for July? Or do we adopt our budget and go to town meeting with the the town in August? So the executive order gives us that flexibility to make that decision.
Discussion on the executive order? Or questions?
Emily, what are you thinking?
I think that we should operate in unison with the town and that we should go to town meeting in August with them as one unit, as one community. I think that the town is not prepared to put their budget through referendum July 14th entirely and that it would not be in good faith for us to operate without partnership of the rest of our community.
Thank you.
Let me add something that at town meeting, when we present the the budget, the warrants, we can actually explain the the two additional warrant items. And that's something that I would not trust to be adequately explained in a referendum. But we'll be there to answer questions or, you know, we'll have that opportunity anyway to answer our reasons for lifting the 5% cap and for changing the special education fund.
Yeah, I'm I'm in agreement as well. We've we've worked very, very hard to have us and the board of selectmen and the Budget Advisory Committee and school staff and town staff on the same page. And I think to continue that spirit, we should, you know, go in unison and go to town meeting and not take advantage of this executive order. Would you like? Well, go ahead and go ahead, Bob.
I move that we take the budget to town meeting as opposed to holding a referendum on it.
I will second that. Any discussion on the motion to continue the budget to town meeting? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and call the roll. Ashley?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That is unanimous. Next on the agenda, item 7.2, second reading and vote of the 2020-2021 school budget. Before we we take any action, our original plan was to not approve the budget tonight, but to wait another week. We put this on the agenda in case the board decided they wanted to go to referendum. Because in order to do that, we would need to have an adopted budget by the 12th of June. So I guess I'll defer to the board whether we want to proceed and adopt the budget as presented today or if we want to wait, table this item and wait another week and approve the budget and warrant articles at our regular meeting next week. Is there a preference one way or the other?
I just have a question. Is there what is the likelihood that we will get any additional direction from the state in the following week?
I don't think that we will. I don't think that we will until after July 14th, honestly. My hesitation, Keith, is that there's still one selectman who indicated she had something to say and hasn't submitted a comment. And so if we are not moving forward to the referendum, I want to make sure that we give her a chance to weigh in. There is an email from another one that you might want to read for public comment, but so if the board is at a place where they feel like they're ready to vote, I can still prepare the warrants for next week and we can vote and do warrants in one meeting.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we table the second reading and the vote of the 2020-2021 school budget.
I second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion to table? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ashley?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That is unanimous. It is tabled. It's my expectation that it will be taken off the table at next week's meeting. That brings us back to public comment and we did receive one public comment. And hold on a second, I just lost it in my inbox. Just wanted to remind people that given the financial issues of COVID-19 and the economic impacts, the tax collector is going to be authorized or is authorized to develop payment plans for taxes moving forward. And that would stop the automatic foreclosure process moving forward. So we will continue to share that message with the West Bass School families. And, you know, anybody else we we interact with and help the town spread that message. I think that's a welcome change and a great opportunity for folks moving forward. And, you know, absolutely, you know, I I think we should be proud of a zero budget. But there there's still some financial uncertainty out there in the world. And anything we can do to support our fellow taxpayers, I think, is a duty that we carry. Do not see any additional public comment that's come in over the course of this meeting. If folks do have public comment, so there's two opportunities to share that moving forward. You can email publiccomment@westbassschool.org. Any comment received before a meeting is read during the first public comment section of the agenda. And then during the course of the meeting, you can also email publiccomment@westbassschool.org. And those comments are read during the second public comment session on the agenda. Moving on to item 9.1, the next meeting of the West Bass School Board will again be a remote meeting on June 17th at 4:30. That's next Wednesday at 4:30. And at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Bob, seconded by Ashley. I'm assuming there's no discussion. I will call the roll. Ashley?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That is unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. We'll see you all next week.
Good night.